I'm Pastor John Newso from Victory Family Church. Just to recap what's happening right now, we're about to start our online town hall meeting with two medical professionals from our community. If you have any questions you'd like us to address, please put those in the comments, because we really do want to hear from you. And so, you know, I want to just, right now, actually invite our guests with us tonight. So I'm going to invite our medical professionals, come on over and help us. We're going to ask Dr. Anna Dumont and Dr. Pascal Chen to come and be with us. And Dr. Dumont is a osteopath, a doctor of osteopathic medicine. And Dr. Chen is a clinical psychologist. And so, I'm wondering, my wife's probably hoping he'll work on me before we leave, but we'll get there maybe. But we just want to take a moment, if you guys could just maybe just tell us a little bit about yourselves, your background, your family, and your practice. So, Dr. Dumont, if you could stop, perhaps, start and help us give us some of your background.
Great, thank you Pastor John, thank you for having me here. So I'm Dr. Anna Dumont, I am a family practice sports medicine physician. So my disclaimer tonight is that I am not infectious disease or emergency room medicine. But Pastor John asked me to be here just to relay some information that we're getting as physicians and from the medical community. So I was originally, I was raised in Lehigh Valley, so a little bit outside of Philadelphia. Went to med school at Lake Erie College of Osteopathic Medicine, where I met my husband. And then we moved down here in 2003. So I've been part of Victory Family Church since 2003. So Pastor John did see me when we were dating, married, and now, four kids later. I have a 14-year-old daughter, and I have three boys, 12, eight, and five.
Wow. Dr. Chen, tell us a little bit about you.
Yeah, sure, so I'm Dr. Pascal Chen, I'm from Long Island, New York. And I'm married with four kids, I have three girls and one boy. And I met my wife in undergrad school at Wheaton College, Illinois, and she's from Pittsburgh. But we lived in New York for a couple of years, and in 2012, we moved here and we started going to Victory. And that's when I started in private practice up in Murraysville. And then the following year, in 2013, I started my own practice in Wexford Clarity Psychological Services.
Wonderful, really sincerely, thank you all for taking the time to do this with us tonight, because we really want to help address these issues from the perspective of spirit, which is a pastor, soul, clinical psychologist, and body, a medical doctor. But look, just to give you a quick recap, again, I'm Pastor John Newso, in case you're just jumping on right now, I'm the pastor here at Victory Family Church. And today, we're hosting an online event to help us address the crisis of the coronavirus. As I mentioned just a moment before, as we're addressing it from the perspective of spirit, soul, and body, as a Christian, we actually know, the Bible tells us that man is three-part. In the same way that God's a three-part being, God the Father, God the Son, God the Holy Spirit, one God, three distinct personalities, man made in his likeness and image, we are made up, the Scripture said, of spirit, soul, and body. And our spirit is the part of us made in the likeness and image of God, in that it's eternal. And we possess a soul, which is your mind, your will, your emotions, and then we live in a body. So with our spirit, we contact God, with our mind, and our soulish realm, we contact this intellectual realm, the emotional realm, and then, of course, the body, we contact the physical realm. And so, but this crisis is sincerely, it's affecting all three parts of all of our lives. And so, we want to jump right into it and give time, particularly at the end, for the questions are going to be asked. And so, Dr. Chen, if we could start with you.
Sure.
And we're going to, just to get started, as some of the questions are coming in, in this present environment of crisis, as a clinical psychologist, how do you help people actually feel better in this type of stress?
Yes, so one approach I use in therapy is called cognitive behavioral therapy, CBT for short. And basically, the premise is that it's not so much things that bother us or the event, but it's our take on it, right? So what we think about the event largely determines how we feel and then how we behave, all right? So if you change how you think, you change how you feel and how you behave. So let's just say, Pastor John, all right, we're experiencing the same event, the coronavirus. We're asked to, you know, self-quarantine, and we're in the situation, right? So let's just say, I think it's not going to go well, I'm going to lose everything, I'm not going to get through this, I want to feel depressed, stuck, maybe even paralyzed, and I might go to Costco and stock up on toilet paper, right? Now you, you think, same event, coronavirus, you think, you know what, I'm going to get through this, it's going to be okay, it's going to be tough, but you know, God is for me, and He keeps His promises, and I can overcome this in Christ. You're going to feel a different way, you're going to feel more hopeful than I do, for sure, and you're going to go to Costco and get some toilet paper, right? Now, but now, let's just say, our behavior stays the same, let's just say, we go to Costco, get the same amount of toilet paper, and we self-quarantine, and we do the social distancing thing, and behavior's the same, but I'm doing it full of paranoia, panic, stress, anxiety, and you're doing it with peace, right? And so, what I help people to do is to shift their thoughts, identify any maladaptive, unhealthy thoughts, and to shift it. And what I tell my clients is, you know, you really can't control sometimes what thoughts come, but you always have the power to choose one thought over another, to choose what thoughts come in and what thoughts you let out. And I'm not saying it's easy at all, sometimes you have to do it 100 times a minute, you know, challenging those negative thoughts, but practice makes progress, the more you do it, the better you get at it.
So when it comes to the reality of the situation, I think for anybody, it's going to produce anxious thoughts, feelings, because there's a certain level of the reality.
Absolutely.
Where being, people are being quarantined, and there's everything from that to shutting down, as we were coming on, the governor of Pennsylvania basically shut down, I think, businesses, non-essential businesses across the state. The economic impact, the stock market disappeared, and these are real-life issues for people. So if you were to approach this to help somebody to actually deal with not just the perceptions, but the actual anxious thoughts, that I think virtually anybody would have to process, so how do you fight those anxious thoughts? How do you fight those feelings in such a way as to actually put you in a position, not where you're in denial, of course, but where you're winning the battle?
Yeah, so we're not trying to pretend everything's good and have this positive spin on everything per se, but we're trying to see things for what it is, not to magnify it, not to minimize it, but see it for what it is and take it from there. So one tool I teach my clients is called the answer list. So I have them write down all of the anxious thoughts, right, on a piece of paper, write down all of your anxious thoughts, what if thoughts, what if I lose my job, what if I can't pay for the bills, what if I lose everything, or I'm going to lose everything. You write it all down, you skip spaces, okay? Now after that, you go back to each of them, and you answer those, you come up with a rebuttal, you reframe it, or you identify an action step. So for example, you know, the other day, I had a client come in, and this is real, the first thing she said is, "I'm screwed," right? And in terms of her occupation, she's not seeing clients, she said she lost more than half in the stock market, and I said, "Hey, from zero to 10, how anxious are you?" She said, "11," right? And so this is what we did. And so what I help people do is to come up with, all right, so one thought is, "I'm going to lose everything," well, let's see that for sure, like, what can you do? What's an action step? Okay, I could call a friend if I need help, right? I could borrow money if I need to, I could call, you know, the crisis hotline if I'm feeling really anxious, or, "Hey, look, she's, she came up with this herself, but I had to focus on what she came up with, hey, I'm going to get a job at Amazon, they're hiring 100,000 people, and so this is what I'll do for now." So it's not minimizing it, but just kind of identifying, like, what can you do about it, right? Because what's the alternative? The alternative is all negative, I can't do anything about it, this is horrible, and then, and then, and then you can't help anyone, neither yourself. So that's one thing I teach. Something else that has been really effective with my clients is mindfulness, okay? Now mindfulness is simply noticing what's going on moment to moment, noticing your thoughts, feelings, and physical sensations, right, and without judgment, okay? And what happens is, when you're able to kind of take this breath, and just step back, you can think more clearly, that actually activates your parasympathetic nervous system, the part of your body that helps you to relax. And then with that, you could create distance.
What kind of nervous system?
The parasympathetic nervous system.
That made sense to you all.
Yeah.
That pretended.
Yeah, and so what happens, so how does this help me in this situation? Well, first, if your body, if you're completely amped, that could help you just kind of get grounded. The second thing it does, it helps it create space. So I might say, "It's not going to work out, I'm going to lose everything." As long as I say it that way, I'm taking it at face value, as if it's true, and I'm acting on it, and it will become a self-fulfilling prophecy.
Right.
But the language of mindfulness is, "I notice I have a thought that I'm going to lose everything, so now here's this thought, here's me, now this is some distance, I notice I have a thought, I'm going to lose everything, now it's just a thought, it's not truth, and I could decide what to do with that, I could just let it go and refocus on what's going on, I'm playing with my kids, having fun with them, trying to with these anxious thoughts, or I could challenge it, or from a Christian perspective, rebuke it, this does not align with God's words, so I rebuke this in Jesus' name." And I had to do this just the other night, you know, the other night, my wife and I, my kids were all working out, you know, she's part of this gym called Burn Boot Camp, and that's shut down, so they have this live YouTube thing, right, and we're doing it, and I had these anxious thoughts come in, right? And so I could yield to those anxious thoughts, or I could shift and say, no, like, this is, I can't do anything about these anxious thoughts now, I should just enjoy what's going on, and I got myself to be present, enjoy the workout, right? So that's what that looks like.
So the intentionality of being able to take, because I think the, which, what I think a lot of people actually believe is that if a thought comes, I'm stuck.
Yeah.
I have no choices. So that's extremely helpful, and so, you know, well, right now, we have 661 people in the broadcast, so let me just again, start from the top, and, because some of you might not know what's happening, you might have just jumped on with us. I'm Pastor John Newso from Victory Family Church, and today, we're having some conversations about how to deal with the coronavirus, as it relates to us in our spirit, in our soul, and in our body. As a pastor, I'm going to be speaking to the spiritual part, and Dr. Chen is just now concluded, introducing how to deal with it in your soulish realm, your mind, your will, and your emotions, and then in your body, Dr. Dumont's here with us. And so, as Dr. Chen is a clinical psychologist, and Dr. Anna Dumont is a doctor of osteopathic medicine, and as you can see, that I wasn't likely going to end up in that field, but so if we can move over, Dr. Dumont, and perhaps you can help us with the physical side of this. I think as there are so many assumptions about how we have to handle the assaults on our emotions and our mind, there is so much information that is all over the page, all over, and no one knows ultimately what is and isn't, and there's a lot of unknowns to this. But because there's a lot of confusion around this entire issue of the coronavirus, and then there's another, there's a number for it, right?
COVID-19.
COVID-19. So could you just help us understand, just one, the virus itself?
Sure.
And then the precautions that we've all been asked to take? Because I think when people think the governor just shut down the state.
Right.
People are like, "That's kind of crazy, that's a lot, that's a huge thing to do." And yet, can you help us understand why those kind of, those kind of practices might even make sense?
Right, and need to take, be in place. So coronavirus and COVID-19, so coronavirus itself is actually not a new virus, so it's been a virus that's been around for a long time. If you actually turn your Lysol bottles and look at them, it actually says, "Disinfects coronavirus," so it's not a new virus. But it's always given some mild symptoms of upper respiratory symptoms like cough, fever, runny nose, things that we kind of chalk up to common cold virus. But as all viruses, they have a ability to mutate. So when they mutate, they try to adapt to survive in its environment. So that's what happened with this virus. So the coronavirus is a new virus called COVID-19, is what we named, is what they named it. So it's not that it's a new strain, just like the influenza virus. If you think about, as medical staff were advised to get the flu shot every year, but then again, there always the question, "Well, did it work?" Well, did it work because did the influenza virus actually mutate? So that's the trick on that. Now, we're asked, as all viruses, is how to protect ourselves. And the virus is spread through respiratory droplets, so coughing, sneezing, and that's why we've asked to social distance, that's why we've asked the quarantine, social distancing being three to six feet away from each other, just because if you spray your cough or your sneeze, it's in the air, and it's also in the, where it lands. So that's why we've asked everybody to, number one, wash your hands. If I, if you remember, anything I say tonight is wash, please, 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 anybody, that's to my kids, to the elderly, wash your hands with soap and water, which I have to remind my eight-year-old. Soap and water, it says, soap and water, 20 seconds is what we're asking. So 20 seconds of washing your hands, soap and water, hand sanitizer, 60 to 80% of alcohol in there, so that's where you actually want the alcohol, in the hand sanitizer.
Okay.
Okay?
Yeah, because if not, they're going to.
This whole mindfulness is just, yeah, so absolutely, and then wiping down. So that is why we're pushing for this just stuff that we actually should have been doing before. So that's kind of the, well, now we have to do the social distancing, because we are getting very close, and the theory is, if anybody's watched the news, you've all seen this curve that we're trying to protect. So the theory is, if you infect a lot of people by not social distancing, more people get infected, correct? So I sneeze, you get infected, now you're by Dr. Chen, now he's getting infected. So if we actually do the social distancing, we're not infecting so many people at one time. So we sneeze, a whole bunch of people get infected after that, and then what we worry about as medical physicians and the medical community is now, there is a rise of infected people at one time. So we're hitting that peak, and the health systems can't, or they're trying, I should say, we're trying our best to maintain that. So the whole theory of social distancing is so we flatten that curve. So you've heard that in the news, everybody's heard flattening the curve, so that when people do get infected, is that's a slower rate that the healthcare system can actually take care of them properly and not reinfect more people.
Okay, and one of the things that you see is that we're being told this virus specifically has a greater impact on those 60 and older?
Correct.
And 59 and a half?
Yes.
So I'm not involved in that, you know, so, but, but we know that the risk, it seems that the proportionality to those who have mortality associated with this are older, correct?
Absolutely, absolutely. So if you look at the data right now, even from the CDC, the children are being asymptomatic, so they are carrying the virus and not knowing that they're carrying the virus, or they're having very, very mild symptoms, and like we said, the common cold, cough, sneeze, we think, oh, they just have the runny nose for two days.
Right. And we know how good they are with cleaning and not, yeah.
Soap and water, wash your hands, soap and water, so yes. So then, the elderly and the immunocompromised, so chronic healthcare, health issues, heart disease, diabetes, they're getting infected, and actually, if you look at the numbers, they're all older.
Okay, and so, yeah, because I was reading that in Italy, because of so many of the older population there, it's the second oldest population to Japan, and they smoke.
Yes.
Which is not, that, which was very different than South Korea, which they said that may have been some of the differences, but, but for the people that are at low risk, it's almost like this feels like a total overkill. So could you speak to why someone who's at low risk should practice social distancing and actually understand that the severity, even if they're, if they are asymptotic, they don't have any symptoms, asymptomatic is.
Asymptomatic.
That was good.
You got it right, yeah.
Yes, and so, so help us understand for that person, help them understand, listen, why you need to be responsible.
Right, and I guess the question everybody's also asking me is, why is everybody quarantined for 14 days? So why is that?
Quarantine is different than isolation.
So correct, quarantine's different from isolation. So quarantine is we're protecting the community by not getting infected, whereas isolation, we're actually having the infection, or they're already having symptoms, and we're putting them away from the community. So yes, so the issue with the asymptomatic children and the low mild symptoms is you're carrying the virus and you're spreading it. And what happens is they, like we said, the older patients get more of the symptoms, and that's the mortality, so it's increasing the mortality significantly with elderly patients. But the quarantine itself, the reason is because from the time of infection to the time of their first symptom, viruses can take five days.
I see.
So they are asymptomatic, they are having mild symptoms, but they're carrying the virus already for five days and then spreading it, so now we're putting them in the community, in school, where their other kids and adults are getting the virus and carrying it for another five days. Now viruses tend to, from what I've read on research, and my ER physicians have told me, is about 11 days of symptoms. So you have 11 days of symptoms, so you add the five days and 11 days of symptoms is why we say the 14 days, 15 days of quarantine, because you can imagine, if you were infected and you never had symptoms, 15 days later, you probably weren't infected.
Okay, okay, and so, as you, as you guys keep your questions coming in, I want to again, let everyone know, if you just jumped on, I'm Pastor John Newso, I'm the pastor here at Victory Family Church. I'm here with two medical professionals from our community, talking about how to address this current crisis of the coronavirus. And like I said, I'm a pastor, so I want to take a moment, and I want to address this now from the spiritual side. There's a couple Scriptures I just want to read to you, and then make just a quick comment for you, and then I want as quickly as we can get to your online questions. So my role as a pastor is to help people walk in what the Bible would call a spirit of faith, and not to be dominated by a spirit of fear. In 2 Timothy, chapter 1, verse 7, the Scripture said this, "For God hasn't given us a spirit of fear, but a spirit, the spirit of God, the spirit of power, of love, and of a sound mind." God does not give you fear, God is not the author of it, but the reality of it is, what He has given us is that which combats fear, power, love, and a sound mind. In Isaiah, there's a wonderful Scripture that speaks to the reality of the difficulties of life, but also the peace that can be in the middle of it. In Isaiah 43, verse 1 through 3, the Bible says, "But now this is what God says, the one who created you, the one who formed you, fear not, for I have redeemed you, I have summoned you by name, and you are mine. When, not if, but when you pass through the waters, I will be with you. And when, not if, you pass through the rivers, they won't sweep you over or sweep you away. And when you walk through the fire, you will not be burned, and the flames will not set you ablaze, for I am the Lord, your God, the Holy One of Israel, your Savior." And so you can see clearly that God's not saying that we live in a world, in fact, Jesus said, "In the world you will have trouble." He's not telling us that these things won't exist. He's saying that when you walk with Me and you live in the power that I produce for you and I make available to you, as a child of God, He actually is telling us that when you walk through the water, it won't overcome you. When you come through this, all of the things that are happening, of which we cannot control, but what we can control is to whom we yield. As Dr. Chen spoke, you can control the thoughts that come to your mind, you don't have to let your mind run away. As Dr. Dumont was saying, there are things you can do practically with your body, but you also have spiritual choices, where you can yield to who God is and what He says about you, and as a result of that, experience His presence, His power, and His grace. And so this weekend, in our weekend services, Saturday at 6:00, Sunday at 9:30, and 11:00, I'm going to be sharing a message very, very specifically about this, and it's how to have faith and thrive in a time of crisis. And I'm going to take you into, actually into the Scripture in an in-depth way, to give you tools, not just cope and get through and figure out maybe we'll survive, but how to actually thrive in the middle of a crisis. And so, so I want to get as quickly as I can to get back to your questions and actually get to them right now, so let's jump into some of the questions that you all have sent. And so, let me see, we have Margaret Laurie 412, there you go, and Dr. Chen, "How should people who already struggle with mental illness manage their symptoms slash relationships in close quarters with loved ones?" In other words, I assume, because this would exacerbate it.
So if I'm hearing the question correctly, she's saying that she's having some emotional mental issues, and she's quarantined with this person that she's having issues with, is that how?
If she's saying, if you are, if you're having to be in close proximity to somebody who may already be experiencing either mental illness or any kind of psychological issues in their life, and how do you manage those symptoms and relationships now when you're in these close quarters with your loved ones, what would you suggest?
Yeah, I mean, I don't know the specifics, but it's just like anything else, you have to modify the situation, so whether it's, if you're living with this person, if you're trying to stay away, then you stay away, like three to six feet, if that's what it is, but really, it's kind of doing what you feel comfortable doing and not going against your conscience, right? And, you know, again, I know this is, it's kind of hard to answer that one, because I don't know the specific situation.
How would you walk someone backwards? Let's say they're living with somebody who's very anxious, and no matter what you say, you're not going to lower that anxiety, what would you do if you're the person in that environment, and this person almost may be putting the pressure on you, "Hey, you need to make me feel better, you need to make me feel better."
I see, sure.
How would you address that?
You know, from my perspective, it is, again, it depends, but it is a boundary issue, because you don't want to enable this person's anxious thoughts if it's rational or if it's excessive, but you don't want to dismiss it either, right? So it's coming to this place of, you have to encourage the person to say, "Hey, look, I'll listen, I'll hear you out, but if this keeps going on," you have to find a place where you start encouraging yourself as well, because now this is burdening me. "I love you, I care about you, if we need to get help, let's call a psychologist, we'll do some teletherapy, we don't have to go in there, we'll figure this out."
Right.
And so, that's what, that's what that looks like.
So in essence, creating a boundary that's realistic but not extreme.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Wonderful. Dr. Dumont, Laura sends in a question, "Well, supplements like vitamin D, vitamin C help boost your immunity, and can you boost your immunity specifically against this?"
So, let's start off with this, always take those vitamins, those calcium, vitamin D is always good, we live in Northeast United States, so that's important, but to actually combat the virus, I've had an ER physician mention zinc to me as zinc, and she actually makes her kids take the lozenges too when they travel to combat some of the infection, but I wouldn't know for sure from research if this would actually combat the virus per se, but to take the vitamins would be healthy, vitamin C for immune system, calcium and vitamin D for bones, so absolutely to, if you're going to take anything, take your vitamins, so yes.
And here's a follow-up question that somebody had, and this is, I think, very realistic for all of us that care for people, particularly those of you in the medical profession, is it safe for them to go to the hospital? This is from a person that said, "Is it safe for me to go to the hospital to get a PET scan next week?" Because they're probably compromised in a sense, maybe already.
Correct, correct, so that is always, so even today, going into the hospital today, I was stopped going in, and they were asking the four questions, "Have you traveled? Have you been in close contact with anybody?" "Fever, chills, runny nose?" So, "Is it safe to get the PET scan?" So right now, from what we've been told from the medical community, is if it's medical necessary, then absolutely, if it's to find out a diagnosis immediately, then absolutely, but if this is something that can wait, we're asking best to wait, best to wait, and that's the, anything elective, we're asking best to wait.
Am I correct to say that hospitals are probably the worst places to be right now? I would think if you have any, for any reason, let alone if you have any kind of immune issues or age-related things, that people that are 59 plus and older or whatever, you know?
Yeah, absolutely, it's.
Okay, and so, the, here's a couple questions that came for me, is, they asked, "How do we really know how serious the problem really is, and how much the government and media could be overreacting to this?" Well, from my perspective as a pastor, I would have no idea of actually knowing what's real and what isn't. The difficulty with all of this is, there's so much information, and we also know that there are a lot of people that have gains to make by this becoming X, Y, or Z, and it's so hard to attribute motive to people. But I just have always kind of felt the real strong commitment to be as wise as a serpent, as Jesus said, and as harmless as a dove, which tells me I don't really want to let anybody govern my life through fear, but legitimate information is legitimate information. I think one of the things that you both are addressing is the fear of the overreach, and I, again, the governor of New York is asking the president to federalize the Army Corps of Engineers, to retrofit colleges, to create hospital beds. Now, I'm not a doctor, I'm not, I don't have all the access to the information, and, but I look at that and I think, well, that's kind of crazy, but, but I could be wrong. And, but my, but I, so what I would encourage people to do is, is to just be wise, and don't give anybody the control of your life, but where you have no options, that's where you're going to want to call Dr. Chen.
Absolutely.
But you know, going to that, it's, you want to, you want to really focus on controlling the controllables, right? And again, a lot of times anxiety comes from this mindset of, "I can control everything," right? And so for example, with this person just brought up, I don't, I don't, do we know for sure it's going to happen, maybe, maybe not, but as you keep thinking about it, is it serving you, is it helping you in the moment? No, we'll cross that bridge when we get there, right? And so that, that's what that kind of looks like. In terms of news, yeah, I have some clients where they're telling me they're watching five, six hours of news, and they're coming in completely anxious, and kind of like, what are you doing, right? I'm not saying you shouldn't watch the news, but a lot of it is just kind of repeat information, nothing new, get enough information in terms of what you need to know, and after that, you need to feed yourself, you need to kind of put in front of you things that are uplifting. Again, and it's not like pretending like nothing's going, you know, wrong, but it's when you're able to kind of make, you know, shift in thoughts, regulate, self-regulate, then you could do the things that you actually need to do. Call that company, you know, call that friend up, you know, if you need to, you know, take money out of the bank, whatever it is, then you could do that, because if you're not, then you're just paralyzed.
Yeah, because it does appear that, you know, the media is the media, it's, it's not a neutral entity. I mean, I don't think anybody watches any kind of news today and thinks it doesn't have some slant or bias, and some predisposition to a certain point of view that isn't based on fact, but opinion, so that by itself makes it suspect.
I mean, kind of what I'm, you know.
And then they're selling something as well.
They're selling something, exactly what you said in your sermon, which is, they're trying to get you to keep watching.
Yes.
And if you keep watching the same information, it's robbing you from using this time to go out on a hike.
Yeah.
Go outside, you know, obviously the social distance for sure. Enjoy your kids while you're home.
Yep.
You know, be creative, right?
And so, Dr. Dumont, this is a question from Jennifer. She said, I'd like to know if kids that have issues like asthma should be more cautious with this virus?
Oh, absolutely, absolutely. So just to reiterate, anybody immunocompromised, meaning asthma, diabetes, heart disease, smoking, that you just be vigilant, not to scare. I'm not here to scare, but just to be more vigilant. Be, like we said, you have control over the hand washing, the hand sanitizer, the Lysol. So just taking control of what we can control. And so for asthma, absolutely.
And so, Dr. Chen, this is, Jewel writes, she said, my love language is touch. And I respect and love on my loved ones by respecting the quarantine and distance, but I desire physical touch so much. Though I'm the same, like with my kids, that I just want to squeeze their face off, and I don't even have grandchildren yet, so it's gonna get worse then.
Yeah.
So what would you say to someone that, really, this is like, this is how they...
Yeah. I mean, use good judgment, right? Use good judgment, exactly what Dr. Dumont said. Hey, look, if it's normally affecting 60 and up, you know, those who have, you know, underlying issues with the immune system, if you love your kids and you have kids, give them a big hug. I mean, like, I'm hugging my kids, I'm hugging my wife, and it's all good. Because, and I'm not doing anything against my conscience, right?
Since I'm Italian, and I wash my hands really, really good and then squeeze faces?
I do, I do. If you're gonna ask me with the four kids, I do.
I think, yeah.
And I agree. I actually let the kids go outside and play. So they're actually outside getting fresh air. So they go for walks, they ride their bikes, and, but when they come in, they wash their hands.
Right.
So it's just become a routine now in the house. So, but no, I give them hugs and kisses. Oh, I can't.
Okay, well, that, okay, now I don't feel...
No, you're fine.
No. And so I think what we're trying to approach in this whole concept is to give you a broad range of understanding from three Christians who have a devotion to God, yet you all are, in a sense, you work in the field of science. And so that's a pretty black and white issue, right? As to how you approach these issues. And so in a world that is anything but black and white. And I can't say I disagree with people that are fearful of the information they're getting. It's just simply because everybody has an agenda, from the politician to the, certainly the media companies, the more ratings they get, the more money they make, you know, they measure those things on purpose. And so why are you telling me this? To get me to watch or because you're informing me? And I don't think they, it's kind of like the person who has the self-interest. It's like asking, you know, it's like asking the wolf to regulate the sheep.
Right.
You know, it's like, well, they're gonna eat sheep, that's what they do. And so, and I'm not saying they're all, you know, twisted and bent and perverse. I'm simply saying that they have a self-interest that really does create a sense of concern for the information, which is why we asked for the two of you to come to speak to the issues from your specific expertise. Dr. Dumont, Lisa asks this, if you are self-quarantined because of a compromised immune system,
Okay.
but your family members are coming and going, are you still being quarantined?
So if it's your family members that you live with, how about that?
Okay.
Then of course, that's still self-quarantined. So it is your family, it is your children, it is your spouse. But you're not self-quarantining when you're asking guests to come over. So extended family, neighbors, relatives, that is not self-quarantining. So if it's just your family member or immediate family, that counts.
Okay, okay. So, and so what we're hoping to have done for all of us tonight is to kind of lower the, just the anxiety, you know? And help people to have access to information that is non-biased, that genuinely is trying to give you a clear and honest perspective. And there are so many additional resources that would be available for all of us. But, you know, look, we don't want to keep you forever. So I just, I want to wind this down by thanking every one of you for joining us tonight. And, you know, I just, I do want to point you to some additional resources for you and your family. Obviously, if you need medical care, do not figure it out on your own. Go see a doctor, go get the help you need. If you're really dealing with issues where you need to talk to somebody in psychological services, go get help. Now my role is obviously, I'm not a doctor, I don't play one on TV either, so... But what I can help you with is the spiritual side, which impacts your entire life. And so in order to resource you properly, you can go to our Victory Family Church YouTube channel, and you'll find a playlist of videos specific to questions you may be asking about the virus. One of them specifically, which we didn't get to your question, had to do with the Book of Revelation. Is this an end time issue? There's actually one of the, and they're four to five minutes long, so they're not long, actually answers that question. And so you can go to our YouTube channel, and you can certainly find that there. You can go on our website, Facebook, Instagram. You can follow me on Facebook and Instagram, as well as the church. Every day, Michelle and I are posting videos to put a spirit of faith in you.